Meetings called to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Erby, here. Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Here.
Councilmember O'Mara. Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember Stanger. Councilmember Quinn.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a call. Any approval of the Journal, please?
I move for approval of the Journal, the meeting of October 28, 2014.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we'll move to communications. Madam Chair, there are no tax compromises this evening, so we'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, 3rd District.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item number two, 6th District.
Receiving file.
So ordered. Moving on to road and bridge matters, item number one, 1st, 2nd, and 4th Districts. Please hold, and that will be the order. Moving on to other communications, item number one. Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Item number two, 6th District.
Receive file, and refer to the Committee of the Hall.
So ordered. Item number three. Receiving file, and that will be the order. Item number four, 2nd District.
Receive file, and the matter be held on the order of business, and refer to the council as a committee of the Hall.
So ordered.
I wanted to hold on that.
You want to hold?
Yeah, that's exactly what I want to do, exactly what we did. So that motion refers it to committee hall.
Right, okay, so ordered.
Oh, okay.
Item number five, 7th District.
Receive file, deposit agreement 201, deposit agreement 202, and the subdivision plat be approved as recommended.
Second, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number six. Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 11, and that will be the order. Item number 12, 7th District.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item number 13. Same motion through item number 14, and that will be the order. Item number 15, 1st District. Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and a copy of this report be sent to the City of Pine Lawn, and that will be the order. Item number 16, 2nd District.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item number 17, 5th District.
Can I ask a question before I... If I would... There's a series of these land acquisitions. If I was to say, read the first, receive file, and then can I do the same motion and just add the city at the end, or do I have to read them all?[225.81][225.81](Laughter) You know what I'm saying?
Well, you could just say, "A report be sent to the appropriate city." How's that?
There we go. I'm going to start out with 17, though. That's... We're on the 5th District. Okay.
It's fine.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and a copy of this report be sent to the City of Richmond Heights.
So ordered.
I thought you were going to say, "Sent to the appropriate city," and then you can just...
All right, oh, that... Okay, there you go.[259.26][259.26](Laughter) Same motion through... That goes all the way to 24.
And send a copy of the report to the appropriate city?
That would be awesome.[271.33][271.33](Laughter) I'm sure those cities would appreciate it.
So ordered, Ken. Item number 25, 6th District.
Receiving file.
Item number 26, 6th District. So ordered. I'm sorry, listen to me.
Receive file, and the change of owner be approved as requested, same motion through item number 27.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 28. Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. We have no add-ons. No, ma'am. Good. The executive committee.
Madam Chair, no reports?
There are no reports of special committees this evening, so we'll move to the public forum. We have eight speakers. Yes, ma'am. Jim will call your name. You have three minutes to speak. She will let you know when your time is up, and we ask you to bring your comments to a close. When you... When she calls your name, when you approach the dais, would you please say your name and address, please? First speaker this evening is John Powell.
He wants to know if he can go out of order.
We ask that the speakers go in the order that they're signed up.
He can take your place. I'm happy to be pleased.
The next speaker is Mark Lorre.
Well, without him being here today, it's not that fun anymore. Um, I just wanted to say how proud I am of the Benny Lou Hamer group. And at first, I have to say, I was extremely frustrated, not generally at the black community, but because knowing Rick Stream, having worked for Deb Lavendaar's campaign several times, he's just not... Just not a good guy. And... But after about, I guess, 60 days, 60-plus days on the protest group, and just reading more and more about how Steve Singer carried himself throughout the campaign, and the lack of seeing Steve Singer come up and address us at least, I felt as if, even if it was disingenuous for a couple of votes, at least Rick Stream made the motions. I didn't see that even that much effort put out of Steve Singer. What I wanted to say today was, it was a cold day today at the protest. It was my first protest in a while. But it wasn't nearly as cold as the blood that flowed through the veins of the killer that shot Mike Brown dead in the streets of Canfield, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker is Adrian Hawkins.
Good evening, my name is Adrian Hawkins, and I'm coming to you from 1330 Fargo Drive. I am a Ferguson resident, and I am representing One Ferguson. It is a group, a grassroots group, yeah, grassroots group, who is coming to you with a few... We have an action plan for our city. We want to present this to you, and we're going to try to make it as brief as possible. I do have copies, if you all will allow me to pass that out, and I also have some copies of some Red Hook Restorative Justice Plan as well. The One Ferguson group is a collaborative group made up of residents. We have come to discuss the action plan and the three Cs models, and that's what we'd like to present, and if the other members of One Ferguson could please stand with me. There are several members missing. We did do a presentation at the Ferguson City Council. The reason why they aren't here is because, unlike other groups, we have a vested interest, and most of our members are with the Citizens Review Board Task Force tonight. So we are doing the things that we say that we're going to do. The first C that we would like to introduce is Commerce. Commerce is business recovery and training. We are asking the county council for a holistic approach to address recovery efforts for businesses along West Florissant. We request access to resources to be expanded, not limited to the ones that were physically damaged, but also the ones who are economically damaged and are suffering because people won't come back to Ferguson. In addition, One Ferguson requests that the county council task the Economic Partnership to explore and create a pathway for Ferguson residents to gain access to newly formed partnerships with St. Louis Community College in Emerson and Centene. Such a pathway, spearheaded by the Economic Partnership, provided details on time frames for business technical assistance, job training, and access to open position. Community, restorative justice, and community policing models. We are asking the county council to direct the county courts to adopt a restorative justice model, to assist municipalities decrease despondent contacts with juveniles, and increase community policing relationships. We ask the council to review progressive justice models that have been successfully implemented around the nation, including the Community Justice Center in Red Hook, Brooklyn, which has inspired more than three dozen community courts around the world. We have contracted the presiding judge, Alex Calabrese, who is interested in working with St. Louis County to see how the approach taken in Red Hook could benefit St. Louis children, which is our main focus, utilizing the Children's Trust Fund for youth programming. And Ferguson asks the county council to allocate funds from the Children's Fund for youth programming and counseling for youth living in Canfield surrounding areas in Ferguson, in addition to direct resources to community-based youth programming. And I'll pass these out, and the members that follow.
And the officer.
Will continue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Beverly Walker.
I'm Beverly Walker. I live in Ferguson. I am one of the members of the One Ferguson grassroots movement, and I am going to cover the first three focus actions for our plan. The first one is policy... Oh, excuse me, police and court reform. We support building a safe community for all. We support building trust between our law enforcement and our community. We support any municipal court revenue over 15% be used for special community projects instead of general revenue uses. Second focus action is community relations and development. We support dialogue and courageous conversations. We support all who desire to build a better Ferguson. We support programs that encourage social and positive interactions between youth and law enforcement. The third focus action is economic development. We support bringing economic development to Ferguson. We support small local businesses. We support and encourage the formation of the West Florissant Business District, and we support responsible corporate partners. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Vera Hampton.
I'm speaking for Vera.
Okay. Mr. Powell?
Hi, I'm John Powell. I live at 21 Georgia Avenue in Ferguson, and I'm a part of the One Ferguson group. The fourth focus action that we'll be working on is citizenship support and progress. We support, as part of One Ferguson, volunteerism and the appointment of a diverse and qualified group of residents to fill the open positions on our city's boards and commissions. We support voter registration and education, and we also support meeting the day-to-day needs of the residents of Ferguson. Our fifth focus action will be resident education advocacy. We support equality education for all in our city. We support equality in that education. We support the expansion and promotion of youth programs, and we support youth mentoring. So we appreciate any kind of support that the county can give us in these endeavors, and we hope that you will consider those asks that we... that Adrian talked about earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hampton, are you going to speak?
No. I support everything that's said.
Next speaker is Gloria Nickerson.
My name is Gloria Nickerson. I live at 7576 Blackberry in University City. I don't have a prepared statement. I'm not here to chew anybody out or anything like that. I first want to say just a few words to the St. Louis County Executive, Charlie Dooley. I think you have done an excellent job representing St. Louis County. It was unfortunate that we lost Bus Westphal, but I would say this, that St. Louis County hasn't missed a beat with any other county, and I think that St. Louis County is number one. Then to my county council representative, Pat Dolan, Hazel Erby, I am so happy that you were reelected. And to Colleen Wassinger, congratulations on your reelection. Mr. Quinn, I'm so sorry that you decided not to run again, but I'm sure that all of your constituents are very happy of the service that you provided to them. Mr. Page, you're not my representative, but we're expecting great things from you also in 2015. To the two council members that aren't here, Mr. Stinger and Mr. O'Mara, I am saddened that you're not here. As a minority business owner in St. Louis County, I wanted to speak to them tonight about the Minority Inclusion Bill. I am very, very disturbed by that. I have followed the entire process. I know that county executive Dooley did do a veto, and I would hope that before we do the swearing-in on January 1, 2015, that we can put some closure to that. And to Pat Reddington, thank you for your service also.
Next speaker is Joshua Williams.
I just wanted to let y'all know that we are still out there protesting, waiting for a damn person to go to jail. Because in the pledge it says justice for all, and in this case, Mike Brown is not getting justice. As long with Trayvon Martin, he didn't get justice either. So every time you must say the pledge, you are disrespecting the Pledge of Allegiance because justice for all means Mike Brown, killer, is going to jail. George Zimmerman going to jail too. So just keep that in mind. Every time you say the pledge, you're disrespecting the pledge because Mike Brown, killer, is not going to jail.
Final speaker this evening is Uriah Takar.
I'm with the African American Defense League. I'm the Midwest Region Lieutenant. Only thing I got to say is, I'm sick and tired, and the people of Ferguson is sick and tired of the police brutality, the violating. When people protest, they get locked up for no reason. They get locked up for no reason, all because they try to protest and try to stand for what's right. But they constantly getting violated. Our people are constantly getting brutalized. Police homicideing our people. We getting genocide as a black nation of people. All this stuff that's going on with us and Ferguson and the whole St. Louis, between the people and the government, as in the police, needs to come to an end. They need to stop. If they don't stop, then by any means necessary, we have to make us stop. They going to keep on doing us wrong. They going to keep on beating us. They going to keep on killing us until we rather get justice, even though Mike Brown ain't get justice, Kamaua Powell ain't get justice, Roderick Myers ain't get justice, Trayvon Martin ain't get justice. And I feel like that ain't going to be no justice on stolen land, unless we take it or unless y'all give it to us, but we've been waiting for a long time. That's all I got to say.
That was the final speaker, Madam Chair.
Just for the record, I know Councilmember O'Mara was... Job called for him to be out of town before this meeting was ever scheduled. I know that for a fact. And Councilman Stanger's wife requested him to be out of town after Tuesday, so they're both out of town, otherwise I'm sure they would be here. Thank you.
Introduction of bills. Bill number 253, introduced by councilmembers Dolan for O'Mara, Dolan, Dolan for Stanger, and Quinn. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Blakelyne Associates Consulting Engineers Incorporated for an electric arc flash hazard analysis of nine county facilities. Bill number 254, introduced by councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to grant Metropolitan St. Louis District three easements and related temporary construction licenses for installation and maintenance of a forced main through county-owned ... or a forced main through county-owned property along Creve Court Mill Road. Bill number 255, introduced by councilmember Stanger, an ordinance amending Title 12 St. Louis County revised ordinance since 1974 as amended traffic code by enacting and adding one new provision to Schedule 6. Bill number 256, introduced by councilmember Erby, an ordinance authorizing St. Louis County, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, S.K.F. USA Incorporated Project Series 2014, in a principal amount not to exceed $12 million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of an industrial development project in the county, approving a plan for the project, and authorizing the county executive to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds. Bill number 257, introduced by councilmember Erby, an ordinance authorizing St. Louis County, Missouri to issue its taxable redevelopment project leasehold revenue bond, Series 2014, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $42 million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring and constructing a facility within the redevelopment area described in the amended Lambert Report Eastern Perimeter Tax Increment Financing TIP Redevelopment Plan, approving the county's acquisition of certain property within the redevelopment area in connection with the construction of the facility, and authorizing the county executive to enter into certain agreements and to take such other action as may be required in connection with the issuance of the bonds. Madam Chair, that is all the bills. Perfection of bills. Bill number eight, introduced by councilmember O'Mara.
Please hold.
Bill number 69, introduced by councilmember Erby. Please hold. Bill number 218, introduced by councilmember Erby. Please hold. Bill number 231, introduced by councilmember Dolan.
Please hold.
Bill number 232, introduced by councilmember Erby. I move for perfection of bill number 232. Please hold that one as well. Bill number 241, introduced by councilmember Erby. Please hold. Bill number 248, introduced by councilmember Erby. I move for perfection of bill number 248.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 248 is perfected. Bill number 249, introduced by councilmember Erby. I move for perfection of bill number 249.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 249 is perfected. Bill number 250, introduced by councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect bill number 250.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, did I hear...
No, I said aye.
Okay. Uh... Motion carries. Bill number 250 is perfected. Bill number 251, introduced by councilmember Quinn.
I'd like to take it up. I move perfection of bill number 251.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 251 is perfected. Bill number 252, introduced by councilmember Stanger.
I move to perfect bill number 252. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 252 is perfected. Final passage of bills. Bill number 239, introduced by councilmember O'Mara.
Move for final passage of bill number 239.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby? Aye. Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara? Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger? Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 239, there are five ayes and one absent. Bill number 239 is finally passed. Bill number... I'm sorry, what did I say?
One.
Oh, I'm sorry, two absent. Bill number 240, introduced by councilmember Erby. I move for final passage of bill number 240. Roll call. Councilmember Erby? Aye. Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara? Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger? Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 240, there are five ayes and two absent. Bill number 240 is finally passed. Bill number 242, introduced by councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of bill number 242.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby? Aye. Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara? Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 242, there are five ayes and two absent. Bill number 242 is finally passed. Bill number 243, introduced by councilmember Erby. I move for final passage of bill number 243.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby? Aye. Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara? Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 243, there are five ayes and two absent. Bill number 243 is finally passed. Bill number 244, introduced by councilmember Erby. I move for final passage of bill number 244.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby? Aye. Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara? Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 244, there are five ayes and two absent. Bill number 244 is finally passed. Bill number 245, introduced by councilmember Stanger.
Move for final passage of bill number 245.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby? Aye. Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara? Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 245, there are five ayes and two absent. Bill number 245 is finally passed. Bill number 246, introduced by councilmember Stanger.
Move for final passage of bill number 246.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby? Aye. Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara? Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 246, there are five ayes and two absent. Bill number 246 is finally passed. Bill number 247, introduced by councilmember Stanger.
I move for final passage of bill number 247.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby? Aye. Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara? Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 247, there are five ayes and two absent. Bill number 247 is finally passed. Madam Chair, we have no resolutions this evening, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Under item number one, 4th District.
Please hold.
So ordered. Item number two, 6th District.
Please hold.
So ordered. Item number three, 5th District.
Please hold.
Item number four, 6th District.
Please hold.
So ordered. And moving on to new business, Madam Chair, we have two prepared orders this evening.
Move for adoption of orders 1 and 2.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, orders number one.
Madam Chair, before... Can I just say one thing? I just want to congratulate Councilman Hazel Erby and Colleen Wassinger, Councilman Mark Hart.
We didn't finish the orders.
Mark told we were done with the orders.
I didn't say it. He had to agree with me. Did I?
I know.
No, I didn't. Orders number one and two are adopted. Okay, there you go.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan. Congratulations to you as well.
Thank you. Over to you, Chair.
Second.
Second.